Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I wanted to welcome you to the Select Board meeting. Would you please stand and join me in the pleasure of the week?
To the flag, the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to say welcome to all the participants, yes. We do not have any appointments for tonight, so...
Excuse me, Chair. We have an unwarrant appointment there. Who do him first?
Who's the appointment, Dan?
He's talking about like a scheduled meeting, not an appointment, like appointing of a person.
Oh. Who? I meant for the Lechol, Angie.
Oh, we already made the decision. I was just reporting back. He's given us the authority to sign for under eight cents, and that's what we signed into for an eight-year, or a three-year contract.
But he's here today, and I don't know.
He's on the Rec Commission. He's here for the Rec Commission.
Thank you, Dan. I appreciate your help. Moving on. Moving on, we're going to the presentation from the Recreation Department. They're going to present their budget. And the protocol for that would be is that they will complete their budget, and then we will have questions from the ABC, and then we will go to the Board of Select for questions. So if we are ready, Ms. Tara, if you would like to start, I'd appreciate it. Yep. She gets the prime seat. And if you just pull that mic in a little bit, it makes it easier to copy data. While Tara's putting all this together, the ABC has came out with a series of questions that were, I hopefully, answer-satisfactory, which we'll find out that's part of what we have here tonight. Please.
So this year, the Rec Commission completed their proposed budget and doesn't, they don't have too many increases. In fact, they're hoping to come in a little bit under budget as usual. And what I'll do is start from the top. Go right through the budget. The Recreation Salary line for 110. The proposed budget is $58,771. The full-time hourly wage would be $45,825. Part-time hourly wage would be $20,808. And the overtime line just has a dollar in it. The employee benefits line is decreased and is at $79,529.
You skipped a file.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, please.
Earn-time file is $5,500. The telephone line just has a dollar in it. Conferences and training has a dollar in it. Both the telephone and conference and training are paid for through the revolving fund. The contracts line, which is the water, our security, as well as our computer. Monthly or yearly cost is $1,660. Facility maintenance is going to remain at $900. The software security, which is our, the Recreation Department's server, has an increase of $124. The line this year will be $4,268.20. We have received that contract, and we will be paying that after the first of the year. Dues and fees, which is our National Rec and Park Association, as well as our New Hampshire Rec and Park Association memberships, are going to increase by $10, so they'll be at $325 this year. Office supplies has decreased by $500 this year, so it will be $634. And the reason for that is because the ink and toner is now part of our contract that we have. And postage, we will remain at $100 this year. We usually use all of that and then utilize the Recreation Revolving Fund to pay for the remaining postage for the year. Mileage, I do want to change that. So I made a mathematical error when I turned my budget in, or this budget in, and the Budget Committee thankfully caught that. So I would like to increase that to $1,748. So it'll be $500 for the Recreation Director's reimbursement, and then $1,248 for the Administrative Assistant. And then the equipment line will hold at $500. And that is all that we have.
Peter, do you have any questions, please? Would you please? I appreciate it.
Peter Rees, Budget Committee. Tara sent me answers to our questions this afternoon. Too late for me to share them with anyone. But one of the issues that we had picked up on was that mileage line. And if the Assistant Director is doing deposits from programs, I personally, now again, this is without any discussion with the members of the committee because it just happened this afternoon, should that be from the revolving fund? If it's depositing funds, revenues from the programs? But that was the only question I don't think she got to.
Do you want me to respond?
Would you please?
I disagree.
I realize you're going down a slope, but you're still going to have to do it.
I agree. We are making deposits on behalf of the town for the Town Recreation Department, and we're doing business for the town.
All right. Questions from the Board on that question.
Is there any chance that you can use mobile banking to do some of the deposits? Or is most of it cash?
I don't know if that's an option. I did get your email at probably 5:00. I didn't have a chance to respond or really think too much about it, but my initial thought was, well gee, that would be a lot of mobile deposits to make on some days.
Yeah, you can't go over $2,500 generally in a mobile deposit in a day, so I'm not really sure how your revenue comes in, but something to consider.
Exactly. We could definitely consider that. I don't know if that's possible. I'd have to talk to the town administrator to kind of figure that out.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
An unrelated question would be if there's some way to combine it with the pickups that we have from TD Bank, who picks up our deposits daily.
Dan? I'm sorry. Please go ahead.
Can I ask that a little bit?
Yeah, sorry.
And since our Administrative Assistant position or person has turned over, we've actually discovered that we were hoping to cut back on those, on the distance that we're traveling. So typically, we go to Rochester. Our Administrative Assistant lives in Northwood, so now we've been able to deposit in Northwood. So we are cutting down on about, I believe it's about four miles on each day we do a deposit. But I think only time will tell. I mean, we're fairly new into that new procedure, so...
Dan, sorry. Go ahead.
It's okay, Dan.
Dan, go ahead, please.
My understanding on MOU, that the town was going to fund the three positions and benefits. That all those things seem related to funding.
Are you on mileage stamp?
Right. The miles and everything. But everything, I thought, when we went through the MOU, and then we went back over all the years of nostalgia, I thought basically the town was going to fund the three positions and benefits, and that was it.
I don't think that's up with the MOU state.
That's my, I'm wrong. I could be wrong.
I mean, that's something that we'll probably have to go back to the drawing board and discuss with the lawyer.
Andy?
Mike, I was just going to be, I think it would be worthwhile to explore if the town's getting daily pickups to tie in with those wherever possible. I mean, that could spare you from having to go anywhere.
Right. And I'll be completely honest, Andy, I was unaware that the town was having those deposits picked up until not too long ago when it was mentioned, so I think that is something that we will be exploring.
Yeah.
Go ahead. That's it.
Well, I think it's something worthwhile to look into.
And if they're coming and picking up, they may even be willing just to swing over to REC to make those pickups as well.
Or she could, after they do the balance, she could turn around and let her know if she does have a pickup.
I mean, all those could be explored.
Yeah. I think it's worthwhile.
I think we should explore and not put it here out for the public's knowledge right now. Do you understand where I'm going? Peter, is that the only question you had?
Do you want to bring up the other one?
I think I'm good with it.
Okay.
Does anybody on the Board have questions for Tara?
No, just when she looks into this, she can read through it backwards and see if it's going to work, and I would...
I think we'll figure it out.
Well, I'm sure you will.
I have a question on the part-time hourly. That doesn't include anybody that participates in the program, is it? Like for summer camp or whatever, that's paid separately out of the 21?
Correct. So the part-time hourly line item, which is number 4112, is the Administrative Assistant.
Okay. Recreation maintenance, what in particular for maintenance do you do with that money? It's 4431.
So we have a miscellaneous maintenance for unexpected maintenance expenses. That's $500. We have earmarked in that line. And then we have our waste management line, which is two dumpsters during the summer months, and they range about $194 each.
And my last question is who have you designated eligible for the mileage?
The Recreation, within the operating budget?
Yes, ma'am.
It would be the Recreation Director as well as the Administrative Assistant.
All right. Thank you. Does anybody else have any more questions? Peter, you're satisfied?
Issue I brought up.
Yeah, okay. That's good. Well, Tara, thank you very much. Very nice presentation. I appreciate it. The next rule will be fire and rescue, please. Thank you very much.
I don't expect any more questions from you guys than Tara does.
Well, you're on the AOL expression, you know, wishing one would go from there.
That's true. I was going to do a PowerPoint presentation, but I couldn't find it on AOL, so actually, Andy will be happy to know that I got it on AOL, well, mostly.
Moving on, Chief.
So I'm going to just go down through each line. 4110, the Fire Chief's salary showed a 2.7% increase based on budgeted numbers that Administrative Scrutiny had proposed to you folks. Full-time hourly represents an increase a little bit more than that. I'm looking to get my people more in line with other emergency services. I didn't swing for the bleachers like I did last year. I'm trying to do this over two or three years, so that's why you'll see about a 4.5% increase in that line as opposed to a 2.7%. Part-time hourly went from, shows about a $56,000 increase. And I briefed you on it last week. So currently, our volunteers or call members are paid through a stipend system in which there's a pool of money, and then they earn points, and then points are divvied out by that pool of money to determine their rate of pay. The Department of Labor acknowledges that you can use a stipend system, but you have to make sure that we're following within the parameters of labor laws. I looked at this last year and talked to Administrative Scrutiny in this, and for a number of reasons, I believe it makes sense to go away from the stipend system and pay an hourly rate. One is that it's a lot easier for me to make sure that we're following the rules. We're supposed to be inadequately compensating people for the services that they're getting. The other one is that currently with the stipend system, everybody in the department gets the same number of points. By going to an hourly rate, we'll start people at a base rate, and then their certifications and responsibilities, various responsibilities that they have different from other people would allow us to provide a higher rate of pay. And then the other part of it is that right now, we pay the stipends on a quarterly basis. I would be proposing to pay the hourly rate on a monthly basis. I spoke to the Department of Labor. They're okay with that. I have to submit a written request to them. I'm assuming that they'll answer that similar to what they did when I asked to pay the on-call on a monthly basis, and they approve it with the caveat that if there's, if they get any complaints, then they could revisit the issue. Currently, my policy with the on-call people are that we'll pay on a monthly basis, but if anybody chooses to be paid on a weekly basis, then we're happy to do that for them. And I would certainly do that with the call members. Say, you know, it'd easier for us to do it on a monthly basis, but if anybody wants to be paid weekly, we would do that. I know, excuse me, Select President Haidkoff had another question. I sent that to the Department of Labor. It appears that we, the way I interpreted it, but I've asked Linda to take a peek at it, and I haven't had a chance to sit down and talk, but the way I interpreted it, we are within, we don't have to do the two-hour minimum as a municipality. But even, you know, we would certainly get a definite certification from that, but the way I interpreted it, we didn't need to. Is that kind of the way you interpreted it as well?
Tracy, does that take care of your question?
I would get it in writing before I...
We did. We did get it in writing from them.
That you would not require a two-hour minimum to report to work.
That's correct, because they're not a, they're not considered a full-time or permanent part-time employee.
Can we just forward that right in, that document to the Board?
Yes.
Andy, I speak, Jim. Do you have a copy?
I don't have...
Make sure Lily gets a copy.
In email, I have it.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
We just forward it to the whole Board.
So one of the things I will need to know tonight, even if it's after the budget presentation, is if you'll allow me to go to the move from a stipend to an hourly rate, because there's things that I have to accomplish before the end of this budget cycle. So it won't necessarily have an impact on the dollar figure, but it will have an impact on, if I'm going to, my intention would be to start in January 1st.
Why don't we take that up and hold business, Chief?
Okay.
Thank you.
The responder stipends, and I know the Budget Committee had a question, no, I'm sorry, they didn't, it wasn't the responder stipend. So the responder stipends would be reduced down to a dollar. In the event that you folks don't approve me moving over to an hourly rate, then I would take the money from the line from, I would reduce the part-time hourly, readjust them numbers to get it back into the responder stipend line. Deputy Chief's stipend is just a dollar. It's just a placeholder. We don't use it right now, but it's there in case we do. The 4122 beyond call program is level funded. That's a, that's an hourly rate for two EMTs to be on standby, available to respond for medical emergencies on the, excuse me, from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM. So that's level funded. That $35,040 represents 365 days. The Per Diem hourly increase shows an increase of $35,258. That's, my intention is to move, should the budget pass in April, to move to, put two firefighter EMTs on Friday night and Saturday night. So those are the nights that we struggle to find people that want to cover shifts, especially in the summertime. I probably personally covered seven, eight, or 10 of them during the summer, and I do them sporadically through the rest of the year. Those are typically the nights that will be a little bit slower, not slower, but less people responding because people are busy and they're doing things. So this is part of my effort that I had spoke to you about, moving toward, in a reasonable manner, to go 24/7. The plan would be is to get these two days approved this year, seek approval for two more days the following year, and then in year three, either do two more and a single one in year four, or we would look at in year three, just picking up the last three. We're going to, whether we like it or not, we're going to need to move in that direction. So I'm trying to do it in a methodical way rather than coming in and doing it all at once. It's not, we still need to, I very strongly advocate for the call members and the volunteers, the part-timers, whatever, the on-call people come in just for emergency coverage. We need them. We cannot operate with just two people for most emergencies, so we have to work to keep our call force vibrant. But the fact of the matter is, is that, you know, we're just getting more, closer and closer every day to response times and getting an ambulance crew or at least a two-person crew on an engine to get out a little quicker and be sure that we have the response capabilities that the town should have. So that's, most of that increase is based on being able to put two more Per Diem people on for the weekends. Overtime line went up about, went up $2,000. That's just a reflection of, I was right up against the edge of it last year. I'm over budget on the overtime line this year. So a $2,000 increase was just so that I could try to stay at least even with what I believe that Per Diem is spending. The Budget Committee, the question the Budget Committee had was, if we're going to add staffing and have people covering calls, why shouldn't we be able to reduce the overtime line? And the answer to that is, is that overtime comes from three different, or three different sources. One is if at 5 minutes of 6 tonight, we had any ambulance call, so the duty crew goes up, covers that call. There's two hours right there. So anytime that they get caught near the time to get off shift, that results in overtime for the town. If we have, there's certain emergency callbacks that they're required to come back for if they're available. So again, if they come back for that emergency callback by state law, they have to pay a minimum of two hours. And then if I can't backfill a shift, or the other day, I had one of my full-timers got sick. I ended up calling the other full-timer, see if he was available, came in. So while that doesn't happen very often, mostly I can thankfully cover a lot of them, backfill shifts with Per Diem people. There are times when I don't, I have to, the only thing available to me is the other full-timer. So at 12 hours, a whack, it doesn't take long to get into the overtime. So I hope that answered the Budget Committee's question. Holiday pay, you show a $242 increase. That is just reflective on the salary, to match the salary increases. 4154 earned time file, that shows about 11% increase. I have two part-time employees that work 24 hours each week, so they now accrue earned time. While they may not necessarily be able to, I'm not sure if they'll have enough time accrued to be able to buy me out next year, but that's what we figured it in, and then part of it is because of the pay, the base rate increase for the employees. Employee benefit increase of $10,000 is reflective on any working comp increase due to adding staff and insurance benefits and stuff like that. I would have to defer to the Finance Department if we needed to know anything, any definite numbers. The contract line stayed the same at 23.6. The start team contract is used in the event that we have a hazmat incident by paying the dues. They will respond out to the town. I had them out in 2018 for an incident that they addressed for us. I have obviously concerns because of Route 125 and 202 and Route 4, there's a lot of... there's a lot of truck traffic and, so it, that's, it's proven that we're part of that team. If they, if we're not part of that team and they come out just to respond out is a thousand dollars, and then it starts from there, an hourly rate plus anything they use. The town, once we call them, the town's on the hook for that cost. If there's a responsible party in which the town can see reimbursement from, it's the town's responsibility to seek that reimbursement, not the hazmat team. If we call hazmat team, then we own it. So, dispatch contract stayed the same. The nice thing we wrote into the dispatch contract was, is that they have to, we sign the contract every year in July, so we know in July what the impact will be for the following year, so for budgeting purposes. The e-dispatch is the cellphone paging system that a lot of my responders use, as well as a tone pager. So, my cellphone goes off in the middle of the night along my tone pager, makes my wife really happy. The enters reporting is a software program that we're required by the state in the instance to report to them all the incidents that we respond to. So, that's the program we use. We do hose testing yearly on the three main pieces of apparatus to make sure that we're in compliance with the NPA. Our cardiac monitor contract is for the service on the cardiac monitor that we have. I think there's two years left on that one before we'll have to replace it. And ladder testing, air gas lease, air pack flow testing. The next line, we use the EMS contracts line. I level funded that. As I said to you folks last year, Frisbee had indicated that they were going to start charging us to come out for transports at the rate of a hundred-and-seventy-five dollars a call, per call. And they made the decision mid-April that they were going to put that off for a year. So, we didn't pay anything this year, it was the way it was. I was notified in September. I actually reached out to them to see if it was on the table or not for budgeting purposes. And I was notified by Frisbee that it is their intention in January to move forward with the hundred-and-seventy-five-dollar call. So, but we saved the money this year. And the, if, once, part of why we broke out EMS contracts, my regular contract line, is that it'll give us a better idea of what it's costing us for medical services. And it's my hope that get a second year under the belt. We're on our first year with, we just completed our first year, the end of October, with a new billing company. So, it's, we should have a good handle on the contract line and whether we can reduce the, whether we can reduce the cost associated with that. I, Frisbee, I budgeted, as you'll see in my spreadsheet, McGregor charges us a contracted rate based on call volume from the previous year. And Dover Fire charges, City of Dover charges four hundred dollars to come out to the town of Barrington if we require paramedic services. So, I plug a number of five or six times a year that they come out to Barrington. Equipment maintenance, that chainsaw generates, portal pumps, air packs and stuff. I'm comfortable with leaving that where it is for now. There was some discussion from the budget committee on the vehicle maintenance line. I level funded that. I think this year, and I apologize for not having a spreadsheet with me, but I think I'm somewhere in the neighborhood of eighteen thousand dollars in that line right now. As you know, we had some expensive issues with the old ambulance that we needed to take care of to keep it going before we got the new one. I level funded it. I'm just hopeful that, one, that we've done all the work on that, the old ambulance, and now the old ambulance is gonna be a second due, that it won't be getting the miles on and stuff, and that we should be all set. So, I know the budget committee had recommended that maybe a three or four thousand dollar, five thousand dollar increase. I don't know, I suppose we can talk about that. Again, with you folks giving us the ability to rob from Peter, to pay Paul within, and stay within the bottom line of our budget, you know, I'm pretty comfortable that we could at least ride it for another year and see if I continue to be three or four thousand dollars over. But again, I'll leave it to you and I'll leave it to the judgment of the budget committee. We had, we put some work into the tank, we had to do exhaust work on the tanker, and we had to do, we had to do rear air brake cans on the engine. Yeah, that's routine maintenance, but it was not anticipated routine maintenance. You know, I always anticipate putting, replacing batteries in one of the big trucks every year. I consider that routine maintenance in the, you know, on a three-year cycle, the three big trucks that get new batteries put on them. And certainly oil changes and state inspections. But while I agree that the rear brake cans on the lead engine were, that is kind of a routine maintenance, it wasn't, I didn't say I'm gonna need to put brake cans on. I am gonna replace tires on the front of Engine Two this year. The state bid on those was about eight hundred bucks a tire. So, I still think that within, within normal routine maintenance and then tires, I'll be close with. The, I apologize on the telephone line, I still haven't been able to get the answer on the question of why we have to have AT&amp;T, we have to have the overtime, I mean, excuse me, long-distance line. I'm still working on that. There's a chance before we get to the end of the budget cycle that we can reduce that by a little bit. I did reduce that line by six hundred dollars. The town, Lynn worked with our cellphone carrier and was able to renegotiate the cellphones. So, we were able to realize a savings there. Currently, I carry a cellphone, the assistant fire chief carries a cellphone. There's a cellphone in the two engines and in the primary ambulance. Conferences and training line, that's kind of a tough line to budget for, because I never know how many people I'm gonna get to sign up, if anybody to sign up for a Fire One or Fire Two class, and then classes run above a thousand dollars apiece. And then in some cases, I need to send them for a physical before they can get into them classes. And, you know, so if, if an individual has health insurance and they're willing to use that, then I've offered to pay the deductible. But if they don't want to use their health insurance for the physical, then that adds about three hundred and fifty dollars to the cost, and then I multiply that. So, the state now, it used to be like, if there's, if there's a class like a Fire One class, where it's physically demanding, the state now requires that the individual, we show that the individual is physically fit to be able to do that, so. I can, I can sign a paper saying, yeah, they're physically fit, but I don't wanna let the doctor do that, so. So, but looking at what we've spent in the conferences and training line over the last couple of years, I felt it was reasonable to reduce that figure by a couple of thousand dollars. Same thing with the dues and fees line. I reduced that by five hundred dollars. There was a, there was a program in which they, you could get a relatively small life insurance policy for firefighters, but every year it kept going up and up and up. And finally, it just got to a point where, in my opinion, the cost for the dues outweighed what benefit we could get out of it, so I stopped doing that. I leave the mileage line at two hundred dollars, it's just, it's there in case somebody uses their own vehicle. We have the pickup, so I try to encourage them using that rather than, but it's the same. In case we need it, office supplies, we state-level funded, operating supplies, state-level funding. EMS operating supply was level funded, fire prevention, protective gear, always left there, level funding. The equipment line shows about a twenty-six-hundred-dollar increase. We're looking to do some computer upgrades. I acquired a new laptop, matter of fact, I got it today, they set it up today. But we need to look at replacing the desktops in the office and probably start looking at getting a Toughbook type setup, at least in the lead engine, and perhaps, perhaps in the second due of the ambulance. But, so, we're, we, you know, John, I asked John, he said, you know, he suggested that I put a five-thousand-dollar placeholder in there. And then, the air cylinders, they're, we got all the air cylinders, or a bunch of air cylinders when we got the air packs two or three years ago. They have a total shelf life of fifteen years, and they have to come out of service. So, we're in the process now of starting to purchase some new air cylinders so that we can get them off-cycle, so that we're not, the town's not sitting there trying to buy twenty-five or thirty or forty air cylinders fifteen years from now. We buy, we buy a few a year, we're getting up off-cycle so that when, in fifteen years, if we're still using these air packs, then we're not. We could still continue to have them a few at a time. The Fire and EMS grant match, you'll see a two-thousand-dollar deal, forty-eight-twenty. Basically, what I did is, I had that in oh-three, forty-eight-twenty. I just, I changed that, got rid of that line. I didn't see need to have three different grant lines. So, I moved it from oh-three up to oh-one. So, that's why you see a, excuse me, put two thousand up there in oh-one, and I put five hundred dollars in the EMD grant match. And reduce, and eliminate forty-eight-twenty. Also, no questions, we're in along the cemeteries.
Peter, do you have any questions, please?
Do you need to include comments?
Yes, that's why we tell you.
Peter Royce again. I think what we were discussing as a budget committee last week on the part-time hourly, I'm not sure if there was a lot of opposition to going to hourly rather than stipend. But what we were discussing was, can we somehow schedule persons so that we're sure who's gonna show up for what, rather than have everybody show up for a monumental event and then no one show up the next day? And I honestly can't say I have a wonderful idea of how to do that, but I'm assuming there may be a system out there somewhere where we can try to level out the response relative to part-time. So, that was really the, a lot of the discussion in the part-time hourly. Not so much that we were opposed to hourly, switching from stipend, but rather, could it be controlled to try to even out responses?
So, if I may, we, when we swap the EM, if we're gonna sign people up and say that they're gonna be available, then what we have to do is we'd have to go on to the same type of a system like we have for the EMS responders, in which we would pay so much an hour for them to come out and respond. And so, we took our policy that we wrote with the EMTs, and we sent it to the town attorney and got the town attorney's blessing or primex, an attorney's blessing for it. And then, we forwarded it to the Department of Labor to make sure that we were, that we were within our right to be able to pay. We currently pay four dollars an hour, so for a twelve-hour shift, a person to sit home, or in theory, sit home or be, we don't call it sit home, they have to be within twelve minutes of the station, they get forty-eight dollars. If we, if I require them, I allow people to stay at the station, but I don't require it, because if I require them to be at the station, then we have to pay minimum wage. So, I tell my people that if they want to go down to Irving and hang around there all night long and wait for an ambulance call, that's perfectly fine. If they wanna go to the movies or whatever, if they wanna come to the station and sit there, that's okay too. I have one or two that are a little further away than twelve minutes, and so they make the personal decision on their part to come to the station. And so, we would need to, we would have to have that kind of a program set up for the firefighters as well in order to, if we're gonna tell a firefighter that they have to be available to cover these calls, then we would, we'd have to pay them.
Satisfied, Peter?
Yeah, we'll discuss it again Wednesday, so.
I hope you will.
Again, among the concerns was that the budget is up over eleven percent from last year. Certainly, that's pretty significant. So, I'm sure that'll be part of our discussion again. The other two lines that Rick gave an explanation to, but really didn't address our concerns, were the on-call and per diem hourly. Historically, it doesn't look like we're gonna spend what's been budgeted this year. So, what we're interested in is, and we've asked this right along through the budget process, where do we think we're gonna be at year-end? And it doesn't look, at least based on the numbers we now have, that those budgets are gonna be spent. So, to justify more money in those lines, it really just didn't click with us as we discussed.
The on-call, the EMS on-call didn't, that's state-level funded.
But we're not spending what we've got in the line this year, was what we were trying to point out.
Well, but see, the thing is, if you, if you take that number and you take three hundred and sixty-five days, and you, for round numbers, say a hundred dollars a day, there's your money. Part of the problem comes back- Part of the problem comes back to is that on a, it hasn't, in the last month or two, I haven't covered any on-call shifts. But if you look back through the year, there was probably, on average, of once a week, I was covering an on-call shift. So, when I cover an on-call shift, that money stays in the budget line, because as a soured employee, I'm not entitled to that. So, that's why you'll see that some of that money has been spent. But the thing is, is if you reduce that line, and I find somebody to cover these, like I haven't covered one in three weeks, I guess, or maybe four weeks. I have to have the money there, and I can't assume that I'm going to cover one a week, or I don't think it's fair, I don't think it's fair for the town to assume that I'll cover one a week. If the town wants me to cover one a week and reduce that number, I'll do that. But it'll, we'll have to figure something else out, so.
Okay, again, I think that'll be something we'll discuss Wednesday, which we'll meet again.
And the per diem hourly line, that's a pretty tough line to cover, to figure, because if I sit down and figure out, and I'm just going to pick rough numbers, but I have to budget about nine weeks of time for the three full-timers. And I'm basing that on every one of us taking three weeks off. And if we don't do that, then the money sits there. Or if, you know, I try to gauge how many times a year I'm going to leave and go to a class and back to my position, or the other guys. So, admittedly, that's kind of a, you know, I suppose if we reduce that line, the per diem hourly line a little bit, and we ended up overspending, then we would just find the money somewhere else to make it up. I mean, that's really why that number is. I think the, I think the per diem, I mean, excuse me, I think the per diem line, if we, if you looked at a number and want a three-year average, and wanted to reduce that a little bit. But we have to understand that if people, people are entitled to use their time, and if they choose to use their time, then I got to find the money somewhere else.
Right, but again, what we try to do is to look at, we have five years' worth of data. So, we're trying to track that and judge whether a budget request is reasonable, given history. So, if there's something different, as you were mentioning about your covering on occasion, then again, you know, we don't know that from looking at it.
Yeah, you're right, right.
But again, we really have an issue with raising money in the budget and then not spending it.
Yep, and I, you're right, I agree with you.
So, anyway, I'm sure we'll talk about that soon. Thanks.
Can I say, Gord, has a comment, please? Tracy?
Thank you, Chair President. Chief, I just wanted to ask you, there was a great article written from the New Hampshire Municipal Association, where they talked about 80% of fire departments within the state having on-call and paying by stipend as opposed to part-time. It talks a little bit in that article about how, basically, by using the stipend, your, for purposes of the Fair Labor Standards Act, and actually, State Labor Department, that those are not considered employees, they're still considered volunteers. As soon as you go to a part-time wage structured system, you will not only be subject to the state wage and hour laws, you will then have Fair Labor Standards Act creeping along as well. And so, I would strongly recommend, before you move to any other type of paid structure, that you do due diligence completely and across all applicable employment laws.
The I Chiefs, the volunteer fire chiefs leg of the I Chiefs, wrote a 75 or six-page document on that exact issue. And the problem coming back to is, is that New Hampshire labor laws and federal government labor laws don't always mesh. And in reading that document, it's not, you're not necessarily getting away with saying that by staying with a stipend-type system, that you're avoiding the fact that they're staying, as you say, volunteers. That's not necessarily the case.
So, when you have to competing both federal and state laws that apply to any employee, and if you put them on part-time wages, they become an employee. Whichever of the two best protects the employee becomes the applicable law that has to be followed for regulations. And I'm just cautioning you, before you move to this, of all of the other unintended consequences, if 80% of New Hampshire fire departments are staying with stipends, there's a reason for that. And I would just caution you, before you move to another compensation structure, that total due diligence is done on the impact of this, potentially using other departments who have moved to it, looking at their budgets, talking about what they've come up against from an HR perspective, things like that.
I did send a survey out to the chiefs. We belong C Coast Chiefs, who are 50-some on members strong, and not one of those replied back that they were using a stipend system. Every single one of them were using a part-time hourly system, paying an hour rate with half-hour increments, in some cases, 15-minute increments. In fairness, I wouldn't say that, I got responses from 25 departments to say that that's a real fair assumption to the number of people that are called versus fully paid. Nobody came back with a stipend system. You know, the thing that concerns me a little bit, and I'll say this, we have always worked diligently to make sure that we're operating within the confines of the labor laws, to make sure that the employees are adequately compensated. We, you know, there's been times when I've gone to the town hall and says, can I do this? And, no, you can't do that. Or, can I do this? No, you can't do that. Or, I don't know, let's check. So, it's safe to say that there never was ever any intention for us to not operate within the confines of the law. But if you speak to Lynn for two minutes, and then you being, you doing some HR type stuff yourself, you understand that one labor in department inspectors, interpretation of the law, and another ones, could be two different things. And that has happened where they, in some cases, if it is in clear black and white, that yes, you can do this, and no, you can't, if they're not comfortable with, I don't know where this is, they won't give you a reply in writing, they'll tell you what they think, but they won't reply to you in writing, because they won't put themselves in that corner. And again, the, it comes back to that, what I don't want to do is make a mistake and have the Department of Labor come down on me or us, because we accidentally did something wrong. And then you face significant fines, because you pay all the employees back pay for a certain amount of time, whatever that is, I think it's three years, I'm not positive. And then, they have the ability to say to the town, you know, you wrote a check out for X number of dollars, you can write that exact same check out as a fine, to make sure that you don't do this again. And I don't have any desire to, one, I don't want to, I want to make sure that the people are taken care of. But two, I don't want to be sitting in front of the fag, you saying, I made a mistake, and I just cost us as taxpayers X number of dollars. So, that's part of the reason why, I believe that it makes more sense to bite the bullet and pay an hourly rate and just be done with it.
Dan, please, suck the damn.
Can you educate me, clarify? How much is the hazmat price, belong to that?
To belong to that, it's based on the, it's $2,900, but it's probably, it might be a touch less than that, $28 and some change.
And then, the $175 of transport for Frisbee?
Yep.
They charge us?
They cha, so, if Frisbee comes in, and much like McGregor does, or Dover, if we require a paramedic intercept who come assist us to getting the patient to the hospital, provide a higher level of care, then they will charge us $175. So, I have to gross budget for that. Like, I have to gross budget the number for an ambulance billing contract, because I don't understand budgeting, but more than that's what we have to do. We have to gross budget, so that's what I'm doing here. I'm basing it on an average of the number of times that Frisbee comes out and helps us a year, and multiplying that by 175. Once we get a year under our belt, and Frisbee charges us $8,000, or, you know, then we would be able to potentially reduce that number.
And then, you can pass that on, can't you? To, or service, right, to if they have insurance?
That's, well, we, the town bills for ambulance transport, so you're correct. If they have insurance, then in theory, the town would receive that money back.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Andy? Kind of hop all over a little bit, if you don't mind. How did we do this year on that, with the new contract?
I can get some numbers and put them together for you. I thought that we, I thought we saw a very slight increase. We didn't, I don't, I didn't see the increase that I thought we would, but.
Right, because they're projecting originally like a 10% or 20% increase in collection.
Yeah, they said 10%, I said we'd get 5%, because I didn't want to agree to their 10% and come back, and it was only seven or eight. But I'll, let me see if I can get them numbers together for you.
I have another question. My other question is, along, kind of along the lines of Tracy's questioning, is there a way where we can look at doing kind of a hybrid of this, maybe on-call combined with the responder, the point system, or something that creates a blended approach to it? My big concern is, you start adding all these part-time hourlies, you know, year one, you get an increase, because when you go part-time hourly, you're going to calculate for an increase for salary and cost of living and all of that. So, year one, you jump up by $1,800. Year two, you suddenly, you're jumping up by $2,400. Year three is $3,200, and your number is just going to compound. So, you end up with this heavily compounded number five or six years into it, because we've got so many people on there, and pretty soon, we're sitting with a million-dollar fire department budget or bigger. We don't have a good handle on that.
In a perfect world, I'd be, I'd be ecstatic if you were correct. But the, so, in theory, what I'm trying to do is, is if you, when you really look at the numbers, I'm asking you folks to approve an hourly rate in that budget line of just under $60,000, is to pay everybody that isn't already a part-time employee to come out and cover calls when they're available for them, and that is roughly the cost of one firefighter. So, it behooves us, in theory, it really behooves us to make, to do what we can to convince our call members and volunteers, pay them a reasonable pay to come out and cover these, because if they are coming out and covering these at night and on the weekends, like they, like we would want them to do, it would reduce the need to actually hire more people to come out, you know, to be on full-time. So, as I say, if in theory, what your model is correct, what you're saying is correct, and if I could, you know, if I can get these people to come out and cover the calls so they're being covered adequately, then that would ultimately mean we don't have to hire full-time people. And we all know that full-time people with benefits and overtime is what costs us. So, it behooves us to try to have a better program with call members.
I would agree, my only concern is, is there's no commitment to address your shortfall items there. You're not, you're not getting commitment. Yeah, I mean, right now, you've got the point system and a part-time hourly system shouldn't be much different.
Correct.
So, what, why does that change your structure? I don't think it does, unless you have something in place that commits people to covering those times where you have the least amount of coverage, which are your nights and weekends. You haven't done anything to really solve the problem, which is why I'm saying, if you look at that point system, is there a way to go to a blended per diem almost? Is another hybrid way to guarantee that you have some kind of coverage without creating a massive increase to the cost of the town to do this?
Well, certainly, certainly there is. If you are to, if you were to double that, $35,040, you double that, I'll put two firefighters, I'll put two firefighters on like we do the EMS. But you still, you still need to, while that helps some, the vast majority of what we do can't be done with two people.
Right, but even if I look at, hang out there with me here. Yeah, I mean, you'd be looking at to do two firefighters per diem, a pretty big chunk, a pretty significant chunk of cost in there, but, well, I guess it wouldn't be complete as, I was looking at 24 hours round the clock from a calculation standpoint, that wouldn't be as big as I was thinking, I could cut that down.
So, successful is the way you do it, if you're working right now?
Well, again, I think the problem is, is that we struggle a little bit. The volunteer system, the volunteer fire service model, isn't working like it did 20 years ago, or 30 years ago, 40 years ago. And, you know, I mean, part of the, part of the problem is, is like I said, that when you, and I'm going to speak from the EMS side, but it is in the summertime. This past summer, spring and summer, I took most every Friday night on-call and covered the ambulance. And, you know, and there again, it's not a huge deal to me. It is what it is, and, you know, I'm committed to the fact that we have to provide the services. But, you know, my job as a fire chief is to make sure that, you know, I'm fortunate that I'm in the position right now that I can put the hours in, and it doesn't bother me to put the hours in, but I'm not doing the town a service if I drop dead tomorrow morning, and you have to hire, you hire another fire chief or replace me, and that individual says, I can't do what he was doing. And now, you as a board are sitting there going, we're either not providing the services, or we're going to spend this much money to provide these services. And I understand that, and really, what I'm trying to do is, I'm a taxpayer in town too, and I don't want to see anybody's taxes go up. But I have to be enough of a realist that says that it's starting to be too many years before I retire, and I really need to make sure that I'm not leaving somebody a big mess to come into this. So, we have to, as a group, come up with a plan that says, how can we accomplish this?
Tracy?
So, just a couple of questions. You mentioned the reason to go to part-time and hourly was that it was easier to make sure that rules were adequately being followed, and I think you mean as far as payment. I came to understand you meant payment.
I was looking more toward making sure we were in line with Department of Labor rules.
Oh, well, under the stipend, they don't apply.
Okay.
The tiered system also would answer a request you have to be able to pay more for additional responsibilities and certifications. What certifications would exist that would garnish a higher rate of pay?
So, currently, right now, we have some people that are certified fire one, we have some that are certified fire two, we have some people with commercial driver's license, some without. The people without commercial driver's license don't drive the big trucks, so certainly- certainly there's a responsibility there. Um, and from the EMT level, you have a, you have a EMT, you have an advanced EMT and you have a paramedic, uh, under a, under the stipend system right now, everybody gets the same thing. There's no, um, there's, there's nothing to pay the assistant fire chief more, the deputy, you know, the assistant EMS chief more, uh, or the captain's lieutenant, something like this. So looking at the part-time hourly rate, um, I was, what most communities do is start at a base rate of, of, I'll just use, I'll just $10 an hour. And then if you have certain certifications, it goes up by maybe a dollar or $2 or whatever it is. And then commercial driver's license would give you a little bit more. So the more stuff you have, the more, you know, the easy, you know, you're gonna start paying somebody $16 or $17 an hour, which is, um, which should be the going rate, but it's pretty close to the going rate of the other community as opposed to the way that the current stipend system is, is that a point is worth X and...
Okay. Uh, two other questions. When people are taking on this, um, volunteer role of being paid the stipend, how, how many of them are beginning their careers with your department and then moving on to other full-time careers?
I'm pretty proud of the fact that over the years since I've been there, we have probably had, uh, 15-plus individuals start with us and end up somewhere in a full-time job. Some of them have, um, have stayed with us.
And then the 4.5% that you have indicated for an increase to other emergency services, so you budgeted for a 2.7% increase as you were directed to based on the approved board step system and cost of living increases. The 4.5% is clearly outside of what had been previously approved. Did you intend to come back and ask for a new step range or to just apply the 4.5% to your budget and assume that the range would change?
No, that, that, that would take our, um, full-time employees and move them to a different step.
Okay, thank you.
Great, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Peter, you, Peter, you had a question you wanted to ask?
Um, based on what, just push that chair out and leave it, oh, okay. That's why I can't get any weight, you know, because I keep walking around. Okay. Um, I think it would be appropriate to investigate what Rick and Andy were talking about is not to look at increases in ambulance revenue, which I'm quite sure have gone up, but to look at percentage of what's delinquent. I think that's really the key and I think based on my recollection of that discussion, we were hoping the new billing would get better collections. Um, but I think with more activity, which I think the chief has reported, we'd have more revenue and I, I don't think that's the relevant number. I think the relevant number is, um, what is outstanding. So just food for thought.
I don't disagree. Um, the last piece that I had, uh, was a question around rotation. Like if you're covering every Friday, have you done anything to talk with your team about rotational shift where maybe someone's taking one Friday, somebody takes the next Friday, one of the other guys takes the third Friday? And then I understand that impacts overtime, but overtime is a lot easier, it, it's a lot easier to pay overtime than it is to add from a staffing component. So I, I know that's something I actually do with my team at work where we have an on-call list and I have a rotational list as to who gets the phone and who's on-call and...
Sure, but the, the, so we had an, we had an off, a duty officer, um, program that we started a number of years ago in which we encourage the officers to sign up for a, um, duty officer shift, um, on Saturday or Sunday. And the concept behind it was that there were eight of us as officers and in theory there's eight weekend days in a month and if every one of us took one, we would have one day a month that we would, um, be available. And for a number of different reasons, there were two individuals that didn't want any part of, taking part in that program. Um, and, uh, most of the other officers felt that, um, with the hours that I put in, it wasn't reasonable for me to be available on the weekends. So, um, they wanted me to, uh, wanted to stay out of it, um, and, and try to have the weekends for myself, which I appreciated what they were trying to do. Um, but ultimately at the beginning it worked pretty well and, and now it's down to, uh, we don't always fill them and, um, it's the same two or three, it just, it, it, a number of years have gone by and it's just, you know, the tip, I was, we're paying $50 a day and most people stand there and say, "For $50, I'd rather have the day to myself or rather do what I wanna do." So, um, you know, sometimes people say, "Well, I'll take it just so the chief doesn't have to kick around." So, um, you know, I made the decision to, uh, I'm not gonna run that program next year. Um, and I chose to put the money, to take that money and put it into a line and, um, we have people, now that we have people around, they're 12 hours a day on Saturday and Sunday, it's less of an issue. It was more originally started out as, let's have an officer available. So part of the problem comes back to is, um, you know, it's hard to, it's hard to get people to wanna give up their weekends. Um, my two full-timers, they work on a rotating schedule, so they, they work, um, they work both Saturday and Sunday every other week. So to, to ask them to take that Friday night on-call or something like that, um, one, you're either asking them to pretty much work the whole weekend and have no time through the weekend, um, or you're asking them to take one on the off-weekend, which would mean that they wouldn't have, uh, they would never have a weekend off. Um, and, and, and the thing is, is I get it, we have some younger people and the younger people want their weekends to themselves. They don't, you know, typically the, the people that take the, uh, end up covering the weekend shifts are myself and a couple of the older people that don't go out and...
Understood. Any other questions? I have a couple for you. How many part-time hourly employees do you look to put on?
So currently we have two part-time employees that work 24 hours a week and then we, um, then everybody else is per diem.
How many more individuals?
Well, we, we, so that, that leaves me three shifts to fill, uh, outside of the two, um, part-time employees. So the two part-time employees each get two days. Excuse me, one of them works every Saturday and, I mean, excuse me, every Sunday, Monday and the other one works a rotating, he works rotating two days depending on what his schedule is on his full-time job. And then I backfill the other three spots with available people.
Okay, and the question I wanna ask is, if we did make the change that you're requesting, would you have any difficulty finding the individuals necessary to, to make that work?
You mean, uh, for, to, to the Friday, Saturday night?
Yeah, for the, you have places that are roomed, other positions that are...
Yeah, there, there could be, uh, that could be a challenge and, um, you know, I, again, I think it's like anything. I think in the early going, you'll, uh, you'll get somebody they, you know, that wants to get their foot in the door and wants to get a job, full-time job somewhere and that it's good on their resume to say that I work part-time for another, um, community. Um, and, you know, and that I have, I have had that thought in the back of my head and have looked at, you know, should we struggle to get somebody to cover, to come in and work for us on the overnight on Friday and Saturday night that I may have to, uh, I don't, my full-time is not listening right now. Um, I may have to look at, um, doing something on a, on a, on a schedule change, which may include, um, them working when they work a weekend, working a 24-hour shift, changing their schedules around enough. So I hope I don't have to go that route.
One of the questions you answered under, uh, 4112, part-time hourly, you put in your narrative that the rates according to skill and set responsibilities. Do you have a set of, uh, uh, skills already that you're necessary? And if you do, who's going to be the one that's going to, is that gonna be you that puts the, uh, puts it together and determines what their rate of pay is gonna be?
Yes.
All right. Uh, second ambulance, are you putting in for anybody to man that now or are you just getting, just keeping it there in case it's a necessary item?
No, uh, I'm not actually gonna, I, it never was my intention to actually ask you folks money to staff it. Um, my intention would be is, once we have that up in place, uh, there's really a couple things. I, I do wanna rotate the old ambulance and the new ambulance, um, from, from lead piece to backup with the idea we'd keep the mileage down on the new ambulance and increase the mileage on the older ambulance, um, because we've already been told the old ambulance is not worth anything for a trade. So if we can get a couple of years out of it and then, um, when I say a couple of years, I don't necessarily mean two, but a, a few years down the road, um, I'd be very interested in, uh, doing what McGregor recently did, which is what they call a chassis remount, where we would, uh, buy a cabin chassis and have the rear box taken off from it and put onto a new ambulance. And, um, whether that's four years from now or three years from now or whatever that may be, so that we'd have a relatively new ambulance and one a few years old. And, um, it's important to understand that, um, I don't have a truck down there that I'd wanna get rid of, but the ambulance is, the ambulance side of the business that we're in is really what drives the business and our, as our population ages, um, and I saw a pretty interesting statistic the other day that the younger, uh, adults are not moving to New Hampshire. So our, our pop, the, the younger adult population is dropping, but the older adult population is rising. So that means that, um, that our ambulance service isn't gonna go down. So, you know, I'm gearing toward the fact that we're, you know, we need to keep heading in the direction we're in and there will be a time when we'll run into ambulances.
Yeah, but one thing about having old people, they have insurance. Anyway.
The seacoast area of New Hampshire is the only area that's not aging at the same rate as the rest of, so you're, you're in the area that's not aging as, as quickly as the rest of New Hampshire.
And then when you did your, uh, copy of your survey, was it selective or did you just go, uh, to a general bailout?
No, we put a general, uh, email out to the, uh, the, whatever it is, 50 members of the seacoast chiefs, but in fairness, there's a certain number of those that are full-time departments. So, again, I wouldn't say it was a huge scientific survey that I sent them.
All right. Yes, Dan?
I have two things. First one, a lot of the bigger towns and roundups, don't they do like three, three days on, four days off in their rotation?
For the full-timers?
Yeah.
So right now, our full-timers, one of them works Monday, has Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday off, works Friday, Saturday, Sunday, has Monday off and works Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. So one week, they, working on a two-week rotation, they get 42 hours a week. So they work 36 hours one week and 48 hours the following week for a 42-hour average.
And then my second question is, I went down Saturday to the EMT's 40th and stuff and I looked over all the, uh, fire equipments, uh, the old ambulance and stuff. I got down my hands, these car, they looked at it and things like brand new, all of this equipment, there's no rust on the frames, very clean, it's up, human inside. Me personally, I wouldn't be afraid to throw a new engine and tranny in that ambulance. Maybe like a new one, but that's me personally.
Well, hopefully with the money we spent on that thing in the last two years, we do have a new motor in that ambulance.
Any other question, Andy?
Um, the last thing that I had on it is I'm, I'm just not comfortable approving part-time hourly without seeing what you're talking about. You're talking about differentiated rates on that and I haven't seen anything of what that would look like. So that gives me a little bit of heartburn. And then, um, the second piece of that is, I would really wanna know what, what we're doing to control that, 'cause I could easily see somebody who, um, you know, maybe doesn't have a full-time job or is working part-time or whatever and comes down and now is hanging out at the fire department claiming that they're, they're working but is not...
No, they, that, that's, they would not, that isn't how that would work. So what, the way it works is that when they're, when the, in, from a time of tone, time of dispatch, the clock would start ticking and they would get an hour for, for minimum. And then anything, oh, and, and then the time in quarters is where it would shut off. Now there's, there's an occasional time, half a dozen times a year or, or a dozen times a year or whatever, in which, uh, let's just say we go to a structured fire or we go to a, a good-sized woods fire and there's an hour plus of work to clean up, getting hose swapped around and trucks and cleaning equipment that they would, it's not uncommon to have a couple hours of cleanup afterwards to have the vehicles ready to go, but in, but probably 80% of the calls we go on, it would be time of dispatch and time back in quarters would, would be, would be adequate. So there isn't, it's never gonna be a case of I was at the station waiting for a calling up my hourly rate. It would, it's, it's, the only reason that I even put an extra $10,000 in the line that is gonna swap some stipend over to that is because it's my sincere hope that it will foster more response and there has to be money there to do it. But pretty loosely right now, the points are worth $16 or $17 a point and that's, that's the general area, average, I would say, of what they would be making an hourly rate. Some would be $15 an hour and the assistant chief or paramedics or something, uh, would be in the $18 an hour range. So the average is pretty close. That, um, the, the point system and what, that we're already paying and the hourly rate wouldn't change that much. I just, now that it would be a clear hourly rate, um, part of the problem with the, with the stipend is, is that, and I pay that quarterly is because I break that money into quarters and I say, "Okay, I have this pool of money and if this year, if this, this quarter, the points might be worth $20 a point and next quarter they might be worth $12 a point because we had more calls and we had more responders." So, um, in some cases, you know, it's, it's not very uniform. They could, they could be getting $20 an hour this quarter and $12 an hour next quarter. So I'm, like going to an hourly rate and them filling out, in theory, what we haven't really decided. Some communities flat out have a timesheet, like I fill out as a full-time employee. Some of them have a duty roster in which they sign the duty roster and then the officer or the senior person in charge after the call would sign the roster saying, "Yes, these people were here."
I think that just furthers my concern is there isn't enough structure right now to, to work toward a figure to say this is the right, right now.
The question he's asking, could you, hasn't, hasn't asked, but I will, is that, could you put, uh, together, uh, some figures that we could turn around and review?
He was asking for a decision tonight.
Well, I, I, I think, so, well, no, but here, so the, I, I certainly would put together whatever, whatever you want. Um, I, I did, I put kind of a quasi, um, list together so that for, for budgeting purposes, I, I threw some numbers together, um, to, uh, show, show that. I, I guess the reason, um, right now our quarter, you know, we end the quarter at the end of November. Um, we, December 1st starts the, the first quarter of the following year. And the reason we did that was is by, it created a lot, an awful lot of work for me, but it, it would create even more work for the finance department to finish a quarter of the last week of December because I would have to wait till December 31st in case we had a call, get that stuff together and then get it to the finance office and they would have to write out whatever, 12 or 15 checks over and above all the stuff they were trying to finish for year end. So we in effect moved our year end one month back to what is the end of November. So I'll turn the... month back to, what is it, the end of November, so I'll turn the, I'm gonna turn the stuff in for the last quarter tomorrow, but, um, I, if, if we're gonna go to a part-time hourly starting January first and I'm gonna, I'm gonna pay the month of December, at the end of the month, it won't be such a big deal, 'cause it's only one month, but that's really why I was looking to decide where you wanna go. If we stay with a stipend system, then it won't change anything.
I don't think it would change anything going part-time hourly, 'cause not, you're still gonna add twelve or fifteen extra checks.
We're adding eight extra checks if he goes monthly.
Yeah, no, I mean, but I mean, not so.
But eight more pay cycles as opposed to right now, when there's only four.
I would've.
Either way, you're increasing the amount of work for finance.
Right.
Who's Dan? Dan?
Um, I had the privilege, I went to Web, um, when they had the new billion-dollar square foot facility, it's a huge warehouse, just a warehouse. They had a full-blown gym and stuff, and one thing, well, people hanging out on their thing, and they don't like to hang out, I see them down there working out and stuff, so we have healthier people than they're down there. People, they take that time when they're on call and they work out to leave, and so...
So, where does that come in with our budget right here?
Because anybody who's hanging out down at Fire Station, if they are hanging out down there, they are, we're gonna work on them, so they'd be healthier.
Well, as, as board members know that, uh, I have been going with the ABC, and it seems like that the ABC and us have skirted the, uh, forty-four, uh, thirty-three. During our discussions with the ABC, it came up that there was an average cost that came in the neighborhood of something like eighteen thousand dollars a year, and we're looking at that, and already this year here, uh, we're at eighteen-nine, and somebody's made a comment that, well, gee, we've got a brand-new ambulance, yes, we got a brand-new ambulance, but the other vehicles are still getting old at the same time. And, uh, so one of the discussions we had was to go between twelve thousand five hundred and to fifteen thousand dollars for, uh, vehicle maintenance, and nobody has brought it up, but I will, so that's, that's one of the questions, uh, we have some that, uh, look at, so we don't have, uh, that part as a whole, or we can, uh, do like we've done before in the past, saying, well, all right, we'll take it from Peter and we'll put it into vehicle maintenance, so that's a question that I'd like everybody to consider, so when we turn around and, uh, sit down, uh, I believe it's the tenth, we have to do the final budget, somewhere around the tenth, we can take that into consideration and talk about it. I would appreciate if anybody else has any comments, I would, I would ask them to give it. Dan, do you have comments?
Yeah, well, there's nothing wrong to run a line over, and then if, if you can't make up within your, your, um, budget, you can come and ask how to fund balance. We have money. There's nothing wrong to run a line over.
That, that's, the question is, do we put it in the budget or do we just turn around and go with it? I'm asking everybody to, uh, consider that and, uh, look at, uh, for December tenth, we do the final work. I mean, I'm just, I'm disappointed that, uh, you know, we're looking at, and he's done a fine job already for the past years, as you can tell, so that's where I'm at. John, you have a question, please?
Two, two points. Uh, December tenth is when the ABC is bringing it in there, report in December seventeenth is when the selectmen are finalizing, just to clarify the, the plan.
Okay, then, so then, so then, even by December tenth, then we have it ready for, for Thanksgiving, maybe a step around on that, so that we, we can still have it by that time. How do you feel about it? Tracy?
I think what's most important to me in reference to the fire budget is to, um, have a complete idea of the unintended consequences from both Fair Labor Standards Act and the State Department, and without that, I don't feel that we could make a decision about this. I mean, there's a forty-four thousand dollar difference in wages, and I, I think we need answers, because I do truly believe the unintended consequences of this is going to be much more costly than we expect.
All right. Any more questions for the fire bunch? Saying that, I'll move on to the cemetery.
Are we doing the, uh, the general question of the warrant articles?
Yeah, you can say there's a page in here on warrant articles that the board should look at before they go to cemetery, uh, in which there's fifty thousand for the truck replacement, fifty thousand for the communication, and ten thousand for capital equipment.
Which has been pretty standard here.
That's standard, yeah.
That's important, please.
And the ten thousand new for the communications?
Uh, the fifty thousand for communication, we have already put, um, some aside.
We needed a hundred and sixty, right, Chief, is that correct?
Something like that.
That's the, uh, that's my best estimate. We were, we were supposed to try to meet with, um, Lee and Madbury, and I were trying to meet with, uh, we're gonna try to meet with our communication company to, uh, look at, um, the, this item as far as getting moved over to, um, basically, one of the issues we're running into is that we, we're, we're still, our P is operating off the copper, uh, phone line system, and, uh, the, um, was Fair Point now consolidated, said, look, you know, as he's passing, passing data, this is outdated technology, and there's less and less people that can fix this stuff, and it's, it's gonna, it's, there's gonna come a time when either you're gonna be waiting, because we gotta try to find somebody to repair it, or, um, depending on what is wrong, we, we won't be able to repair it. Uh, they didn't say it was next year or two years from now or five years from now, they just sent that, they shot that, shot across the bow a couple of years ago and said, you really gotta be moving in that direction, so, um, we're, we've been doing, trying to put money away, um, and one of the questions we have with the company is, is because, um, you know, we're, we're trying to depend on Baring, uh, three communities to come up with funding, and every one of us needs different amounts of funding, um, that, one of the questions we're, we're trying to ask is, is can, can we do a piecemeal? Can, can I make the upgrades to our stuff irrespective of what the other communities do, um, and what's, what's the cost for Barington? But the last number I had was, you're right, it was, it was in the mid-one-twenty to one-thirty thousand dollars, and then we're, we still gotta put money away for, uh, new portable radios and stuff.
And did you get the answer, whether one of the three communities would actually do the upgrades?
No, we were, we were supposed, we tried putting a meeting together, uh, for this week and, uh, between the, the communication company and the other chiefs, we just weren't able to all come up with the time, so we didn't get together.
What would, what would happen if, if you put the money aside and the other two municipalities cannot raise their funds to change the system over?
So if we could change our system, if we could change our system, then I would ask the board of selectmen, once we had the money set to go, can we move forward and get it done? If it has to be all done together, then we're going, we're going to be forced to bring people to the table, whether it's selectmen from the communities or, uh, administrators from the communities or whatever it is, and, and try to come up with a plan that says, okay, by, you know, this will really need to be by this date.
Okay.
John?
Um, in, I'm sorry. Oh, I was gonna just answer Tracy. Right now, we have a hundred and four thousand in the fund, so this fifty will bring us up, um, so that probably this year would get us close and the following year, you know, wow, twenty-twenty would probably put us in real good shape for the portables.
Don't you think it's important to know whether we can actually move ahead with it though, without the other two? Like, having it sit there and, and taking the dollars this year, I, I, I think we need to know the answer.
But all we're doing is moving it from un, unencumbered fund balance to encumbered fund balance, basically.
Well, with, with voter approval.
With voter approval, with voter, and only with voter who will get back to damn point. We can't take it from fund balance, we only can take it from unexpendited appropriation.
John?
Oh, and really all we're doing is, we're requesting it, sorry, from, we're requesting that they do it, but we're saying we'll use the money that we've already gained through taxation to do that.
Yes, well, it's, it's more complex than just taxation, but you're right.
John, please.
Rick, is the new billing process that we set up, what, two, three years ago, is that working better than, uh, sending out two bills, and if they don't pay them, we say?
So, so the system didn't change. What, what we did was changed companies, um, and their, um, their billing practices are a little bit different. Um, I think it certainly bears, um, putting on the agenda for us to sit down and have a discussion about ambulance billing, and, um, I, I would strongly recommend that you carve out a block of time, a little bit longer than we have tonight, 'cause it's, it's pretty complicated, and, and I think that we have to look at, uh, I think there's a couple of different issues we should look at in relation to how we do it now and what we should consider doing, and, um, I think, you, you know, there's some changes coming down the highway from both, um, from Medicare standpoint and a commercial insurer standpoint, that we're, we're trying to, I'm trying to stay as educated as I can about it, and, uh, as I say, I think that once we get past the budget process, if it moves the five-year to...
Future discussion.
Yes, I think, I think we need to carve out a fair amount of time to have a, a discussion about it.
Chief, would you work with, uh, with John and set that up, or if you get through the budget stuff, so we can have that?
Yep.
Thank you. Dan?
Um, I know the communication budget's been running low for years, I've been, we at one oh four, I wouldn't mind seeing it go by sixty thousand, so we're at one sixty, like, one sixty-four, is it gonna drain it? So you, you excuse the consultants coming and play? I know most of the right number of money.
It's, it's my hope that all the slackers and hard cop, that I can sit down with that, the other chiefs in the communication company and kinda get a handle on, uh, have a, a more accurate handle on what we're gonna need and what can we do irrespective of what the other communities do and be able to come back. While I don't agree that we shouldn't necessarily put the money away, because we're gonna have to do this no matter what, I think the money should be put in the way, um, and...
That's what I'm saying, I mean, if we need extra ten thousand, let's have fifty, go to sixty.
Well...
Bring the balance up, so we have it there.
Yeah, I'm...
So that's something we can consider after the next budget cycle. Is there anything else we wanna discuss on the fire department's budget, or EMS budget?
So the only thing, just one last comment, we're going from fifty thousand for our capo, or for, um, proposed warrant articles to a hundred and ten thousand, and we only do, last year we did the, from fire department's standpoint, we did the building and the fire truck capital reserve. Did we do communication?
We did communication last year.
I just didn't see it, looking at last year's.
Fire truck was two, I mean, the building was two years ago.
Oh, yeah, you're right, seventeen. So, I'm not sure you know when we're seventeen, but we're...
So, so last year, last year we put fifty thousand towards the truck, we put fifty thousand towards the communication.
And had in equipment, right?
Uh, I'm not sure we put the equipment in, because I think we did something else last year and we took the equipment out.
I believe, I believe you're right, I think, I don't think we did.
Last year we didn't do the ten thousand.
That's what we did. The storage building was a year before.
Yeah, you know, the storage building was a year before, and, 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 uh, I think that last year is the year we went to fifty on communication, and the chief said he'd rather go to fifty on the communication than wait off on the, uh, equipment, because we were in good shape on the equipment. Uh, I'll tell you what we have in the, um, uh, equipment line.
Well, equipment lines current, um, about fifty thousand, I believe.
Uh, no, the equipment line right now is twenty-eight thousand.
Okay.
Twenty-eight thousand, uh, two hundred roughly. Yeah. 'Cause we only were putting, we put aside ten, um, I think, three years, and we used a little something for something, as I remember, so...
Yeah, following Rick's notes for proposals, I said it was about fifty, that means...
Which one did you say was about fifty?
Equipment.
I think we used, um, I think we used some to buy the thermal imaging camera. When the association bought one camera, we took the money out of that account to buy the other camera.
And that, that would make sense, that that's why you bought it down.
But that should've brought it down to twenty thousand dollars.
Should've brought it down to twelve.
Twenty thousand dollars, yeah.
Was there another item that you bought too? Get back to...
We'll look at it.
Not a big deal.
We'll, we'll get to it.
Rick, I just... Putting quality time with, with Rick on fire, move on.
Any other, any other questions before I move to cemetery? Dan?
Can I make a, do I make a break between the cemetery and fire cemetery? I'm near the back of the room.
Go ahead, we'll, we'll, we'll make it easy on you.
This is a simple budget, so...
Yeah, it is. So go ahead, Rick.
I was pretty sure the fire department was, so in my mind it was...
No, I didn't think so.
You listen to me today.
Are we gonna move on there?
Just pause.
So, so with the cemetery budget, um, the only, the only increase is, uh, sixteen hundred and eighty bucks, almost seventeen hundred dollars. Um, we, uh, we went over to a, uh, software, um, uh, that, uh, cemetery software company in which, um, we'll, we will get, um, the entire cemetery inventoried into a cloud-based type system. Um, for you being new here, Tracy, um, everything we have is in a file card system.
Yes, I, I came along right about when we were...
So, uh, so they approved the system, it's, uh, and Peyton has been working on it. I actually haven't talked to Peyton in a while to see where she's at, I'm sure she's, uh, up to her own pits and alligators right now, um, doing taxes, but, uh, she had been working on it, so the, uh, seventeen hundred dollars is the, uh, annual, um, I use the term contract, but the, uh, maintenance fee or whatever it is that they call it to, uh...
To update on the tax, first of all, they collected a million point one, one point one million today.
They got taxes.
Yeah, taxes were due today. Um, but, um, starting next week, uh, we plan to have Peyton dedicate much of her time towards the cemetery data entry, but she's been, this month, she's been tied up with tax.
Reps?
Yep.
So, um, the, uh, cemetery maintenance, uh, line, the electric line, uh, there was some question, uh, 'cause there's a document floating around that said we haven't paid anything for electricity, um, but, um, this, uh, thing I have in front of me says that we've spent about a hundred and thirty-five dollars on electricity. Um, typically, the electricity gets turned on in, uh, April and it's shut off in October, so, um, the operating supplies and, uh, improvement and expansion, so we typically always leave, um, that line till the end of the year. Um, thankfully, we haven't had a lot of problems with vandalism in the cemetery over the years, but with a thousand dollars deductible and we're operating on a relatively modest budget, um, we, uh, we tend to try to hold on to that till the end of the year and make sure that, um, like, a couple years ago, we had storm damage we had to deal with, um, so it, it typically at the end of the year, around this time, uh, we'll go ahead and order our, uh, spring supplies and, uh, our fertilizer and lime and that type stuff, store it in the building, so that as soon as the, uh, the school department's ready in the spring, they put it out, um, and then we, in theory, we're staying a year behind, but we're purchasing that stuff, um, a, a few months ahead, assuming that the money's there. If the money's not there, then we would purchase it out of the following year's budget. Um, we, as I reported to you, um, we had Eversource come in to, uh, isolate the power to the, uh, building, because we had some, um, wrought damage that had to be repaired, and, um, when the guy come in, um, he, he says, he took a look at this and he goes, uh, Chief, he says, I don't know, uh, how we allowed you to keep operating this, um... Um, we, we were way out of code. Uh, they shut every, they disconnected everything and, advised us that until we made significant upgrades, that they would not, um, put any power back into the cemetery. So we're in the process of, uh, doing that. They had to relocate a pole, uh, some question as to whether or not we're going to, the town's going to have to pay that bill or if Eversource is going to give it to us. I haven't seen a bill yet, but, um, from there, we're going to have to, uh, upgrade the, uh, put 100 amp service into the building and upgrade the meter socket and get some, uh, underground power. And so we're, we're working with the town's electrical contractor to, um, get something in place so that, um, in the spring, as soon as we can, we'll get in and get that done because, um, it's kind of imperative that we get the water turned back on by the first of May. So, um, if we can, if we can acquire some of the stuff and get some of the stuff done this fall, then, uh, Paul's working on that. Um, the, let me find my notes here. The, uh, budget committee had a few questions about the, uh. So the, uh, the question was when the last, uh, mowing bid was out. Um, it was about six years ago, but it was the last bid that we put out. The school department took over the maintenance of the cemetery in, uh, 2015 for a flat fee of, uh, 10,000 dollars, um, for the mowing contract. That in, uh, in 2015 realized just under 5,000 dollars. I said just savings over 5,000, but I actually looked it up and, uh, in, um, 14, we had budgeted like 14.5 for it. So, um, they also asked, is the price dependent on specific hours or jobs? Uh, no, the contract is that they perform. I think it's, uh, I think the contract says, uh, up to, uh, 15 mowings a year, um, with specific timeframes that it must be mowed prior to both the, uh, observed Memorial Day and the traditional Memorial Day, Mother's Day, Father's Day, uh, Labor Day, um, and Veterans Day if needed. The, they, uh, they do filling and seeding as needed, um, and, uh, stone repairs as well as, um, as well as, um, uh, trimming the shrubs and, uh, putting down fertilizer and stuff like that. So the, um, we're, uh, we're very happy with the services that we're receiving from the school district. The reason that the, that the budget shows has not much been spent is this is typically around the time that, um, we get a bill from the school. So it gets paid, paid to them at the end of the year. And, uh, and as I say, we, we just, um, I just got, Paul dropped bills off today for about 20, about 2,000, 2,200 dollars worth of, um, chemicals for next year.
ABC, do you have any questions? Well, thank you very much. Board, have any questions? Say no, we'll, we'll thank you very much, chief, for coming.
Thank you.
Next time, hope you can spend more time with us. Moving on, first public comment. Anybody have any public comments?
I do, I do, while I'm here.
You want to drink some water before you start it?
No, I'm good. I'll just say what I gotta say, then I'll get up. So, uh, a while ago, um, or, or a year or so ago, I sent you folks a memo. I think it was a town mechanic that lost their highway garage to a fire and, and the equipment that was inside that. Friday night, uh, another community, I think it was Warner, maybe, but not positive, um, had a structured fire at their highway garage. A preliminary investigation indicated, uh, that it probably started in a vehicle inside the building. When we look at the fact that we've got a, a steel building and I might have been told the other steel buildings don't burn, so it's no big deal, but anyway, um, the, I'm concerned about the fact that we have a half a million dollars plus of equipment that we store in that building on any given day. And that building sets well off the road. That's a relatively quiet neighborhood there and a fire can burn for quite a while unnoticed. And if, uh, I certainly am not going to stand here and say that I understand the layout and how vehicles are in there, but I, I gotta believe that they're parked close enough that if they get in there and get burning, that it isn't going to take too much to damage multiple vehicles in there. And I, I, I strongly believe today, as I did a year ago when I sent a memo to this board, that, um, the highway garage ought to have a fire alarm system in it. We have a fire alarm system in our public safety building and we have heat detectors out in the bays where the trucks are parked. Uh, we have never had a fire alarm activation because of a, uh, where the vehicles are parked because of, uh, vehicles running or, or vehicle smoke or anything. That's why you're putting heat detectors out there. And so I, I took it upon myself this morning to, because I don't have any idea what a fire alarm system is worth. So I, I asked Paul, he contacted, um, Bob Salisbury, our town electrician, and said, look, Fire Chief just wants a round number. And he indicated that, um, you'd be looking at about 7,500 dollars to, to do each bill over there. I spoke to the road agent today. I told him I was going to mention this to you folks. You know, for, again, and, and I don't have any idea, but I assume that once, once the building, especially the building outback, uh, there has to be a half a million dollars plus of equipment in that building. And, you know, between tools and all the other stuff he has in the, in the main building, um, there needs, there, it would seem to me that a half a million dollars wouldn't be a, be a stretch there. And, and when we look at the fact that he just ordered a brand new truck and it's going to take six months to get the thing, if we were to lose two or four trucks because, uh, that building caught fire, um, that's going to put us in a real jam. And I believe that, um, you know, we should, the, the buildings ought to be adequately protected so that we have a fighting chance of getting over there and, and stopping something when it's relatively small. So I would encourage this board to, uh, consider, uh, looking into putting a fire alarm system in both of them buildings.
Thank you. Any comments?
7,500 total?
No, 15,000.
And as per a monitoring standpoint, our contract with UNH dispatch, um, allows our town buildings to be monitored from, from within UNH dispatch, which I would prefer anyway. Uh, our schools are monitored there as they're required to be. So, once we got it up and going.
Any other public comments? Tracy, please.
Quick question, chief. Wouldn't it make more sense for a fire suppression system in the building as opposed to just the alarm?
Um, a fire suppression system in that building would probably, depending on how much water you have, that have, uh, calculations, uh, that storage is about $2.50 a gallon, not to mention a fire pump and tie it in into the generator and stuff. So certainly a fire, fire suppression system is a better alternative, but it's a lot more costly.
Well, would the response time be by the time we got to the garage with the crew?
Um, during the day, um, if we're at the station, about five minutes. At night, you're probably looking at 15.
I'm just curious, would we be able to, in 15 minutes, a fire in the building would park?
Doubles in size every minute.
Okay, so I'm, I'm back to a fire suppression system, chief.
Even during the day, you're going to likely lose pretty significant.
During the day, it's less of an issue because you've got people around there. The problem is at night, without a suppression system, you, we stand no chance because, again, that's a quiet neighborhood and it's, it's, you know, it's like anywhere, you know? Smoke detectors save lives. If you can, you can live right next to the fire station that is fully staffed 24 hours a day, seven days a week, but if everybody's sleeping and nobody stops at the fire station and says, hey, the neighbor's house across the street's on fire, it doesn't matter. So again, you know, we, if you go back and look, in the last five or six years, there have been five highway garages in this state that have had significant fire damage. And I believe every single one of them were tied to a vehicle fire from within the building. So, you know, that, I, I'm not a fond lover of them odds.
Wouldn't it make sense to, to figure out the, the upside of the cost to our insurance if we put those suppression systems in the building?
I can ask. I don't think there's much.
Thanks, Dan. Dan?
It doesn't matter if we have it protected. Fire suppression, if a fire goes in that steel building, that building's junk. There's no engineer will sign off on it, in my views. It, it doesn't matter. It'll, it'll be a total loss anyway.
The building's not my concern, right, right to building law, but a half a million dollars of taxpayer equipment stored in there give us half a chance of losing one truck, not five or six.
We're insured and that's what, that happens. As long as I'm willing to tariff.
Thanks, Dan. Any other further public comments? Say no and move on to the review of the minutes as of November 26th, 2018. Comments?
Suzanne, did you make the changes that I had?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a motion.
Motion to accept the minutes.
Second, please.
All second motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on, staff reports. Administrative group.
Uh, the first thing has to do with the finance officer job description that the board was sent copies of, um, a couple of weeks ago. Wanted another week, I, I think last week actually, and wanted to look at it. Uh, there were minor changes that were made as of last week. No changes have been made since then.
Any comments from the board? Say no, don't make a motion, we accept it.
No, I was going to say I was comfortable last week with it. So does anybody have any changes from last week?
No, I just said that I'm looking for a motion. Nobody has gotten.
Motion to accept the revised finance officer's job description.
That's correct. I have a second, please.
All second.
I have a second. All those opposed? All those in favor?
All go aye.
All right, four to one. Okay. Back to general.
I abstained. I wasn't.
No. From, from, from the, uh, not from the minutes, this is for the, uh, finance, finance.
I'm sorry about that. I was on the minutes.
Right, it's, uh, we skipped over to it. What about here today?
Yay.
All right, so four to one.
Uh, we have started interviewing.
Dan said, Dan said.
Well, you're all.
Yeah, no, Dan said no.
No, I said aye or aye.
You said aye or aye.
That's not what I said. I said all those. Anyway, it's five and over. You need to listen to how I asked, asked the question for the vote.
The, if, if I may, if.
Please, John.
Uh, we are interviewing candidates who can get a better feel than I thought we would attract, um, pleasantly surprised with the quality of the applicants and we are currently interviewing. Uh, proposed holiday for the town employees, according to personnel plan, I bring it to the board for approval. Uh, this is basically the list that is in the personnel plan with the dates adjusted for what 2019 will be. The only discretionary day is the day before, the day after Christmas, and we're recommending the day after Christmas as the day that goes with Christmas.
So can I ask why?
I can go, why?
Yeah, because then the town hall is closed for a long weekend.
Right, but that makes it really difficult for the residents of the town. So while it's certainly pleasing for the employees, I would think you would want to be open Monday, Tuesday, closed Wednesday.
Close Tuesday, Wednesday.
But then, but then Tuesday is a dump day that you would then be, uh, having the employees working and getting double time and a half of the dump.
Keep in mind that people that work in, in the market and, uh, they don't get all these vacation days. I think it can get too.
If, if you look at it.
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, we'd be closed, but if you meet at Christmas Eve, then we'd be open Thursday.
The town hall would be open Monday and Thursday of that week.
Right, doesn't that make more sense for serving the clients?
Well, but then you would be, just understand, they're doing it that way, you also mean that the dump is going to be, um, closed on Tuesday and only open Monday that week. Because all Tuesday is a regular dump day and you're closing on Tuesday.
I thought they were a different schedule.
So why can't you have them open on Monday?
Because they.
Or Friday.
They would be getting double time and a half for the personnel plan for working Tuesday. But if that's what you want to do, that's what happens.
I mean, I need to say this as delicately as possible.
Oh.
They are, they are structured in a, in a salary range that I don't see a huge impact to that, but my thoughts are, if, if you're going to be closed on Tuesday, when is the next dump day that you would be open? So why wouldn't we then be open on Thursday or Friday?
Well, we might consider adding an extra day.
Would it not add more?
Please wait till you've been called on, please.
Yeah, there's a cost associated with that.
All right, I think that for, I'm just, you know, servicing cli, I mean, I, I think it's important to think of our employees, but I think it's as important to think of the residents of the town.
It's a very slow.
Yes.
It's a very.
No, no, for the, uh, for the town hall.
No, I, I understand.
I also would look at, if I, if I were going to have the transfer station open rather than doing it on Tuesday, I'd much rather see it on Thursday after Christmas when people have lots of stuff.
We had a problem to go get rid of.
I absolutely.
So is there a motion to have the schedule with the change being the day before Christmas instead of the day after?
That would be my motion, yes.
I would second that.
Aye or aye?
Vote, please.
Aye or aye?
I'm going to come aye.
Aye.
Very aye.
Okay, I had suggested a proposed charge for the water committee to monitor and study the use of surface and underground water supplies by other municipalities, to monitor and study the future demands for water supply by users within Barrington and by other municipalities, and project future needs for disposal of wastewater, including septic and possible community treatment systems. And that was a, suggested for a proposed charge. Does the board want to proceed with the water committee with that charge?
Comments, please? Tracy?
I would be fine with the water committee. If we were covering one or two, I absolutely do not agree with number three.
Yeah, we have to.
My thought on it is, like, when I look at this, most, a lot of this kind of lines in with the, the geologists, like, are we really going to have somebody adequate to, I mean, maybe there's somebody in town, but I don't know if you would have, to, to do what's being requested here, I think you're going to struggle to get appropriate candidates.
I have very strong objection to having a water and sewer treatment plant ever in the town of Barrington.
No, hold on. Can clarify this, Tracy?
I think it's expensive.
No, that has nothing to do with it, but overlooks our water supply and then a lot loading on land, sewage spurs through the ground, that affects the groundwater. That, that's because it ain't a treatment plant. But if you could have your neighbor flowing into, um, sewage, into wetlands and stuff, and that committee could advise the DS, whatever, or you move the project and then the impact of the loading on the lands too much.
The Department of Environmental Services with the State of New Hampshire has oversight of all of that. Am I wrong?
No.
They can't see everything.
I, I absolutely, I personally don't feel a need for a water committee.
Environmentally, if you want to see all of groundwater, it would be.
We're a water-rich community.
Rich.
We have water.
We are water-rich right now.
We don't want to wash it.
Point of it is, we have other communities that. Point of it is, we have other communities that own.
If, if you're worried about watching it, then, then set up testing of aquifers four times a year, but I don't see what creating a quote-unquote water committee does.
We have a lot of communities that own property within the Barrington, uh, town limits that might have the opportunity themselves to take that water out and use it elsewhere. And that's one of the reasons why we need to study is to see if that's going to work for us. At the same time, if they decide to take the water out, we're gonna have to, uh, go forward and, uh, we can only get 20%, I mean, excuse me, 50% of what they do and what they drill to give out, and if we refuse that, then we don't have the rights to use the water. And it'll be like Las Vegas is with, uh, the main dam, the water up in the, uh, in the lakes, so.
John, do you have a comment on this?
Um, well, I, I'm, um, I, I, I understand that there are some board members who want a water committee and some who do not, and I was requested to put together a possible charge for a water committee.
And your opinion of the charge for the water committee, sir? Hang, hang on, John has worked in multiple municipalities, some with water sewage treatment plants, some without, some that share water resources, some that have aqua, share, share your ideas, please.
I tend to agree with your analysis that without a geologist and without careful, um, scientific studies, it's gonna be difficult for the water committee to carry any weight. It could, um, help to gather information. Dan is actually correct that, uh, what happens with septicage and septic loading on lots and everything is actually probably the biggest issue that's in this, that's in this, um, in this charge. Because when we say community treatment system, it doesn't necessarily mean a town water system. There are trailer parks, uh, no, excuse me, mobile, manufactured housing unit parks. And, um, there are some condos with community treatment systems, and the septic loading is an issue, um, that could impact surface water. Now, the state does oversee it, but really, we have to, John Huckins is the health officer who's the one who reports it, and, so, whether, I just want this, just how active this committee would be, whether you're gonna get volunteers for it, and when are you gonna find a really high-qualified employ, uh, people that you need for the committee is a question I have. Um, I would say that if you could find people who are interested, then we could revisit the charge, but that's kind of where I'm at.
One of the items that the past committees did was they used, uh, UNH. The UNH provided numerous studies, uh, to answer some of the questions as to what the phosphate load was and everything else from the seepage into our water and how much more was going down, and so that, that's another part that we could use. Did cost, Dan?
Um, I agree with, uh, John's group that we need to establish a list of people that will spend the time for volunteers, volunteers out of this time, town, and you qualify people. So, we can generate enough people qualified, as was you over there. So, putting the committee there, we cannot fulfill.
Andy?
Is, is your concern about water leaving the community that's not qualified for?
The, the concern is, is the amount of water that's here, the amount of seepage that's coming in from, uh, the different lakes and what have you, it, it all, it all comes together. But the part that bothers me is the amount of property that's owned around the aquifers and everything else, which gives the neighborhood towns the usage of the water. They don't have the total supplies that we do, and if we're not careful, we're gonna end up being on the short end of the water because they're gonna be taken with us. And that's the reason why I asked John to put these together. I was one of, I was the one that they asked to bring this back, so we could have this, uh, monitored and, uh, the future needs for the disposal system, the way our town is working, we're gonna overload, as, uh, Dan so eloquently put it in the beginning, and that's, and that's where we're at. So, I just have to say to you, uh, you know, if it's something you don't want, just, uh, say no now and it'll be done with. But I'm just trying to give us a heads up so we can have, uh, a future use and monitoring of what's going on.
Okay, so, I guess my concern, or, I guess where I would go with that is if our concern is about water being taken out through other communities, wouldn't it not be, or, or why would we not just put a warrant article together to manage that or control that? And put that before the piece of paper?
Well, basically, because the state controls surface water and underground water, so as I think Tracy mentioned early on, the state's the one who controls the, um, the water, and that's what the whole USA Springs Nottingham.
Right.
Fight was all about, is the state was giving the permits and the town didn't want it happening, and the state overruled the towns.
You did, right, but in that case, that wasn't surface water.
That was underground water, but they also control the surface water and regulate that. So.
Well, I sent letters to them all when we were dealing with that, and not one community, including Portsmouth, all around, nobody set back an, a, uh, interest in it whatsoever. No, I got, well, they probably, probably, a lot of orders are gone now, but they were there.
Dan?
Um, personally, I don't think we, we can fulfill enough members qualified for the board. We have, I had, one of the questions I asked for a list, this one we go generate, you said we didn't have volunteers to do it, and how many volunteers do we have for the committee right now?
I didn't go out for, for a list on that.
I think, we should do that, that's why they, the lands committee, I want to establish that I could find enough volunteers, and then I can ask the board, and I said I found
Any other comments? The, uh, it looks like that, uh, many here is, uh, is opposed to this, so.
We're not opposed to it.
You just said you just changed your mind.
I said that you could.
You supported, you, you supported in the beginning, then in the end, you just said you, you.
Well, my question was, for, someone's supposed to go out and generate enough volunteers.
I understand your question, but that's not what I'm talking about now. I agree with you, we should go up with a list. I'm just talking about.
If you want to table, if you can come back with a list, I'll be the one to listen.
Does this include, uh, septic as well as water being removed from the town?
It would eventually, because some of the old documents that, uh, are on file and that do show that UNH did some studies on some of the, uh, lakes and what have you, the ponds that we have, showed the seepages of the, uh, phosphate and nitrogen levels were coming up in it, so, but nothing was done with it.
Well, I've got another comment on that. It isn't your legal septic systems that are installed, it's the overnight specials.
Yep.
And you're not gonna get rid of that, because that, that's there.
I caught a few of them.
Well, it's a lot of the old systems that ever went through a hole originally, yes.
An off-country septic system, it's all.
Look what's hap, look what's happening out there to, uh.
Overnight specials, what it's called.
Nippon Lake, they have all the old ones out there, they're just about choked that lake out, so, anyway, alright, so.
So, what does a person, you've got to look at both sides of this issue.
Yeah.
What does a person do with a septic system that is failing? He is replacing it through the state, and you're saying, well, nope, can't have it. So, what is he gonna do? Put a pipe down and let it go?
No, no, I don't think you, I mean, if the state approves the system, you can't stop the system.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but if you're, if that's part of the idea was to eliminate it, illegal ones, I'm all for it, but you don't get people that'll churn it in either, Okay, now we got that all.
The next item is bond council engagement letter or other decision related to town hall, police station, and library. Uh, we did get a response from the library, uh, chairperson for the trustees. Uh, basically, the fundraising has been with the, a statement that they would try up to three years in a row. If they don't get it the first year, they'll try again the second year, so they don't feel they can make a promise not to proceed in 2020 if it fails in 2019. So, the question is, what does the board wish to do? We have this engagement letter, which needs to be signed in order to, uh, for the bond council to be working on the town's behalf. How does the board want to proceed?
John, I need, um, an education here. So, first of all, I appreciate it that the library, um, gave, gave us a full understanding of, of why they can't propose this this year and not next year. And from a fund development perspective, it is historic that you've got a half a million dollars in funding secured for a public project, and that says a lot about the support that the library has, um, gained for the project. That said, the education I need is the bond council engagement letter, as it exists right now, if we were to sign it, it means that we would not be going forward with a town hall this year. So, we would have to change the bond engagement letter if we were going to go forward with a separate warrant article for a town hall?
You would either need to revise this one or have a second engagement letter that was related to engaging the bond council. It would make sense, if you're planning to do the town hall too, it makes sense to revise this and have both bonds to be reviewed by the bond council as part of this.
And so, would this select board have to make a motion in reference to that?
Yes.
And would we have to know what it would expect to be to do a design-build project on that?
Uh, well, I would think that, um, if you're going ahead with a bond for the town hall and/or police station, um, the more information you have, the better, which is the original plan to have, uh, a warrant article for the, uh, working on the design and then being ready to go out to a design-build with what they did in Farmington, for example, with the, uh, building they built recently that is a combined police and fire station. They had started working with Bruin Builders. Bruin put together, um, a proposal he had to, as a design build, he showed those to the public in the fall when they were going through budget hearings, and then when they got to town meeting, that's the proposal they were voting on, and they had a figure, uh, for what it would cost to build, but he had designed, he had been selected by the board, he had come up with the plan, they approved that plan, and then they went forward with it, uh, for bonding.
Do we have time for that?
Not in, uh, no, we would not have time to get anything that, um, that fully explained on the town hall project. There are a lot of decisions that have to go in, I would say the space needs, um, analysis on both police and, uh, the town hall. Do you even want to proceed with the police now, since we're planning to do the inexpensive fix at the current building for two or three years to buy some time? Um, I think that the, uh, that the original plan, which the board had, which was to, uh, go for design money in 19 and develop the plan and have the time to fully develop it for going in 20, still makes more sense. However, I mean, we know that the board has made a commitment to build the town hall for under $2 million, so you could always go for $2 million and say, we know we can build for under that based on, uh, average per square foot cost and the number of square feet we need, uh, but you're not gonna have a very elaborate design.
No need for that. It's a non-expensive design.
No, you're right, we, we, we had an expensive design and that failed.
Yeah, many times.
And if you do an ICF building, you can, you can do a lot to control your cost pretty substantially on that, and your, your need from a heating standpoint goes down exponentially.
Oh, the heating system goes down, your sprinkler system you can eliminate because you can, um, you can, you can do it in a way that, uh, for, for a, uh, for an office-type structure, uh, the life safety code would not require sprinkling. I think the last time they had reviewed it with a fire engineer, when they came up with the 12,000 square foot design, so that they didn't need sprinkler in the, the design that came forward, um, uh, unless the code is changed substantially in the last three years, that's probably still the case, but I do think you're right that there are, are savings. As far as the letter goes, there are two ways of doing this. One is to sign an engagement letter for two bonds with, or the other is to sign two different engagement letters, one for the library that is this, and then they can send us one, they, they can generate these bond engagement letters very rapidly, and they could have one for next meeting if you wanted to sign one for the town hall bond.
I, I mean, they look at, at 150 bucks a square foot, if you went with an ICF building, figuring, we were talking originally 10,000 square feet, if we went to 8,000, that brings you in at 1.2.
Well, actually, we were talking 12 coming down to nine, 10 or nine, 11 going down to nine, I think.
You have your own.
But that's still, that's still.
Sixteen, even at one, you're at 1.2 or 1.6, depending on what you do, how you do it, whether you're at 8,000 or.
Hang on, Dan, one of the things we talked about, this system was just going to be 9,000, above 9,000 square feet because of everything, Dan said cut out everything else, that was the last thing we spoke about.
Right, but still puts us at under 1.5 million.
Yeah. So, Dan, you have a comment?
Since we're paying council and the bond thing, can we put in, the library wants 4.5 million, plus their 500 is 5 million. Can we break it out into 2 million and 2 and 1/2? Well, can we go 3 of them, 1.5, break up the, 4.5 million?
You can go one bond, you can go two bonds, you can go.
Two separate ones.
You can, every bond you go, you need a separate either engagement letter and needs to be specified.
Can we do it, so add up 4.5? Can we do bonds that add up 4.5, so it'll go either way?
Both are the reason.
Yeah, what's the reasoning in that?
So, if, if the library fails, the town hall fails.
You'd have to say it was specifically with the purposes.
Yeah.
You're going for the 4.5 for the library, they've done the work before, they've got the back, they've got the money for it. This is about whether you're gonna go as well for a $2 million bill, design bill, to run a town hall. And I.
We can wait till next year.
I don't think we should.
No, I think we should.
We're going to lose the thousand property on 1.25 that's available to us.
He gave us a couple of years, so, we can go, we can go for it, that, that creates a say.
If we turn around and sign the letter for the library, they go on their own, and then we turn around and keep it separate. We had made discussions over the past year of us going together, and that was something that was not favorable to any.
Is that, is there someone here from the library?
There's several.
Is that true, you would not want a combined bond? You do not want a combined bond?
I'm not sure we have the knowledge to answer that. I mean, I think that we're already on a very fixed path.
I got you, okay.
And to change that path now may be difficult.
Okay. So, that's normal.
It would be, it would be, uh, it would be who of us if we did decide to go up for that money that we need for the town, that to have two separate ones.
Two separate letters, okay.
Because if, if one passes and the other doesn't, now you.
Okay, I understand what you're saying, no. I, I don't have enough education about this, so thank you. No, I appreciate it, it's just not something I've ever worked with. Okay, so, we would, we would sign the current engagement letter for the library, and then next week, we would present a secondary?
That's, that's what the board wants to do, we can do that. Do we have a figure that we want to do? Or do we want to?
I, I.
Excuse me, excuse me, please.
1.9 million.
Okay, that, that would turn around and, uh, if we had to, we, we could slide the, PlayStation in.
No, not at 1.9, you're not sliding anything.
Well, I'm just asking, I'm just asking a question, if somebody could, you know, have their opinions brought out here.
I mean, 200 bucks a square foot on a 9,000 square foot building here, 1.8 million.
Yeah, I agree that we do this. We're getting the land for a dollar.
Can I ask John Huckins, um, how far, I mean, I, I had been using in my head that it was $200 a square foot, but any idea what a commercial, um, um, that, um, concrete CF?
ICF.
ICF, uh, per, per square foot?
I think Andy's research, he knows more about it than I do. There's so many different ways to build it, that. There's so many different ways to build it that the cost completely changes.
Do you think 150 could be a legitimate number?
You actually can do it as, as low as, you can be closer to 100 bucks a square foot if you organize your structure the right way and you weigh it out correctly. Now, I wouldn't say that that's our target, but 150, I think, is a solid number.
I know Farmington came in under that number, but they did have a large garage, which brings the average down.
Um, Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I mean, there you're at 1.35. I honestly believe you could, you could easily be under 1.5.
Not with, not with the septic, the well, the landscaping, the, all the rest of that.
You'd be surprised.
Just a minute.
I can answer that question.
1.9. Dan?
Chief Williams did some research with Bruin on different, Bill Belles was out, and he was at 175. So, we checked the emails from last, the number? He has a clue.
We're not doing, we're not talking.
Yeah, he does, 1.9.
Yeah, I think 1.9, you're fine.
Okay. But can we focus on the library? Because really, we've put this off till we got an answer. We got an answer. Their, their reasoning for going out for three years is perfectly understandable. From a fund development perspective, you don't collect money from people without a commitment of how you will proceed. And I think that they've been on the up and off with the donors, and we, we should sign their bond engagement letter.
We already did it, we read earlier.
Oh, I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the 4.5 million-dollar bond engagement letter for the library.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
All those, they will take a vote, Dan?
I don't.
All right, I'll say, Bailey, aye.
I've been pretty vocal about my opinion on it, but I still think that 4.5 is extreme.
This is only for the board?
It is, but this, this ties back to my comment earlier that we did hamstrung all the way through the process about having input into the budget, and this is the one shot where we have any say over how things go.
I think we need to leave it up to our townspeople to decide, Andy.
I would agree.
Okay.
I'm just making a statement that nobody listens to what we say as a board. We get blown off on that, so.
Is your vote nay?
Point nay. No, my vote is aye.
Okay.
And I agree with Andy, so mine's aye too.
I would hope they would take that in consideration moving forward with things, and as we finish this process.
I, I will say this, I really feel ill informed by the library not telling us that they went to the street here when they cut the money. Yes, I would say, your vote is?
I appreciate their transparency when we ask the question. My vote is aye.
No matter what I vote, aye is up to the taxpayers. And then this, this scene, we were fair enough to ask not to stack them, and now they want to go three years row, so it's up to the taxpayers.
So, your vote is?
Aye, but it doesn't mean nothing.
Thank you.
5-0, John Williams will sign the paper.
How have you signed it?
Did Dan want?
Dan said aye.
It doesn't mean anything, though.
Okay, now, the second thing is, do you want me to request a bond council letter for 1.9 million for the town hall?
I'd like to make a motion.
I'll second that.
There aye. Article five.
There must be more to this than just what we're saying. Why is it, come the end of the meeting, that's when we start doing all this stuff? Why?
Well, that's because the agenda was written in that order if you want the truth on.
I mean, it, it just, I, I just can't see pushing for everything in one year. I support the library. I don't know that I support a town hall this year. I should say next year.
This town hall's been going on since 2003 when we first went out and asked them to.
That's right.
Pay for renovations.
And I've got my right to say nay.
Yes, you do. Hold on, I'm not arguing that point. I'm just saying, we have asked for it since 2000, not we, but the board has, since 2003 to make some changes.
I'm saying nay.
I get it, I get it. So, who's seconded? So, this is 1.9?
A bonding meeting.
I made the motion, chairperson Bailey seconded it, and started a vote, and we've got one nay.
Two ayes, one nay.
Two ayes, one nay. Who's nay?
Me.
What do you want, this year, next year?
Hang on.
19, 2019.
Aye, but I don't like the 1.9, but we don't have to use our 1.9s.
Right, that's true.
Vote carries for one.
So, use the word yea, aye. Yeah. I don't like this one either, just it just sounded like the other one.
Okay, one advantage of being under 2 million is there's additional charges that go once you go over 2 million, so 1.9 has some bonding advantages.
No, we were probably, we didn't know.
Okay, next item on my report, if I can get back to where we go.
Bad check policy.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Now, the bad check policy, is there, we have been discussing adopting a bad check policy internally, and we would like to adopt the attached policy with notification schedule fees.
How many people would we have on our bad checklist?
Oh, we get a lot of them. We get them almost daily.
Yeah, so give me an idea, would we be placing 300 people on this? Thank you all.
No, 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 we wouldn't be placing 300. We might, you might place, as far as, the first bad check, we probably get, what would you say, 100 a year? I wish Peter was still here. Peter, did you say that number is right? What is the number of bad checks we get a year?
Last month was pretty high because we.
Taxes.
Were collecting taxes, and I believe we had eight that month, so I'd say 100 would be actually hot.
100 would be, less than 100.
But some of them are repeat offenders.
Then we start getting repeat.
But then that's a crime after a certain amount of money, though.
So.
We'd get 50 new ones a year would be a wild guess, but.
50, okay.
Okay. So, my, my only question about this is, operationally, is it more work for you to have a policy like this in place? Because now, do you need to begin to check everyone who gives you a check and see if they're on the list?
No.
Like, if I present a check to you to pay my taxes, if you don't check the list, how do you know if I bounce checks to you?
There's a few that repeat offenders.
You can mark, you can mark the account.
We mark the account, say the tax account, they'll be marked in the tax account.
Oh, okay, then. I'm just making a word for anybody.
No, actually, this is to make it simpler. This is, this is coming from the tax and town clerk.
Okay, so I would make a motion to.
And I think they have good memories when I'm usually the one receiving the notices from the bank, and as soon as they see the name, they.
They know.
They know whether they see it before.
Also, the fee, sometimes we end up paying that fee. So, we have a motion, I second it. Any other further discussion? Tracy made the motion, I second. Is there any further discussion? Dan?
There aye.
No, that's not what I asked. Is there further discussion?
No, thank you.
See, now we'll have a vote.
There aye.
Oh, article five.
That's right.
There a five carries, John. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it.
I'll let Tracy do it.
John, do you have any?
That's everything I have.
Okay.
This is Suzanne's stuff here.
Suzanne?
I had a request from someone who came to the office today, and he wanted permission to trap beaver and mink on a piece of town property off of 125.
Not conservation?
Oh, swains?
Yeah. He also was going to talk to some other property owners, you know, that live around water, but he needed permission from the town as the property owner to trap beaver. What's your pleasure?
That property's landmark, so if you have your permission from other people across.
No, not this piece. This piece has frontage on 125.
That's swain, the 17 acres?
Yeah.
That's a landmark.
It does, it's not landmark, it's on 125. There's a couple of pieces down there. Maybe it isn't swain, but a couple of pieces down there. And this one has frontage on 125. It's right across from the Chamber of Commerce.
That land right there?
That's the piece between you and you.
So, Wett can't do anything else with it. Boy, it's a beaver, me.
And it goes down to the founders, so it's very bad.
I, I really think that if we would, we shouldn't, that's my opinion. I don't think we should allow them to be trapped.
Okay.
Because I just don't feel that way. I'm not a hunter, I'm not a person that was out after the wildlife, like now they're suffering as it is. What damage are they doing where they're at?
He was talking about beavers blocking stuff.
Right, not bees.
Well, I know.
But we're not talking about the same piece of property that he was talking about the other day.
No, but we're talking beavers.
He wants to trap on the property. So, what do we do if three other people want to trap on the property? So, then do we tell them all they can trap on the property?
One excludes the rest.
Okay. So, and, and if you give them rights to do it one year, does that mean that they have the right to do it the next year? Like, are we issuing?
Can I speak for Congress?
They're only going to need one year to turn around and take that out of there.
You're right. Next year, you'll have to make a decision, do you want to rotate the other lots and get somebody else?
Somebody else can do it. You're a turtle con, and they keep breaking the den there, but there's nobody putting them for trapped den. You have a comment?
Yes, conservation encouraged people on the opposite, go, ask permission for tree scenes up, and they even goes up there. So, individuals come and ask for permission, I think we should allow it because they've got to do it anyway. And then if you want to put a quota on it, on one year, and then they have to go into a.
I know nothing about this, so.
It's a state form, and I think it's only good for one year.
All right. I think, I think personally, I would make a motion to allow it.
I would second that.
Any further discussion?
No.
Well, I have, I just think that I just think the idea of taking wildlife out of a small contained area, what benefit is that going to have for us to turn around and take the beaver out of it? Would the next, would the next issue be that they want to put a fill, get a fill permit to put in it? That's my question to you.
A fill permit for beavers?
After they take the beaver, the wildlife, out of that swamp.
They actually hit a point where they reproduce enough that they actually will gnaw each other and try to move each other out. They get pretty gnarly looking at them.
But that's not out, but the thing is, after the, after the wildlife is removed from the property, the next thing, somebody will be asking the conservation or the CBA would be to pour a fill permit.
Well, it's our land.
I know that, but, but if we sell the land after we sell the beaver.
You should not sell it.
But anyway.
How do you know?
Protection.
Now, I.
It's a gift, it's a tenant.
Our restrictions are.
Now, we'll have a vote.
There aye.
Article five.
Hatch, no.
That's right.
There we go.
Ready to do.
Okay. Oh, then we, then you have the GIS Internet Services for Catographics, is that the contract?
Right.
Which is over there. Something's got it.
Two copies.
I know.
payroll manifested 11/25/18, which is over there. And 11/29/18. That's it.
Did you sign this?
There's two copies of the catigraphic, signing both things.
This is what?
Well, somebody didn't sign, that's fine. I can take care of it. There'll be enough signatures.
Okay.
Again.
Suzanne, do you have, do you have anything else, Suzanne?
Connor is working with me on easements on Malivo Road Bridge, and we need to talk to Mr. Morris about getting a temporary and a permanent easement. I believe that the HTA has already talked to him. Does anyone know him who'd like to approach him, or shall we approach?
Which home is that? Talking to Connor?
14, it's 14.
Is it downstream?
No, 141, I apologize.
Wait, is it the Colonial on one side of the bridge? Is it the Cape on the other side?
It's sold, isn't it?
And, yeah, just sold for 289 recently. I know these things. If you happen to walk that road, it almost doesn't dent it.
Someone, you might take.
I will, yeah.
That's fine.
What does the permanent easement mean? We need permission to go across a portion of their land?
It means that we're going to put a cement abutment on it so that we need to have a permanent right to have that cement abutment on their land.
Okay. Will it better protect their land from flooding? What effect does it have on their land?
It has very little effect on their land. It faces the pad of the bridge.
So, I, I would be comfortable going with you or Connor and talking.
You're on your waters, it's just yourself.
This is law, isn't it?
It's, it's the Colonial.
Oh, I don't know that.
They just bought, well, not just.
Oh, oh, you're, wait a minute, not the tan Colonial with the pool in the backyard.
And garage, and stream running through the front yard.
They don't care, the place where you're putting that is way on the.
Oh, I know, that's what I said.
Oh, just write to them and tell them. Their dog, by the way, is the one that keeps.
I didn't know about the dog. We'll send a letter for it and see what response.
I'll go, I'm not afraid of dogs.
No, I mean, if, 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 if everyone thinks it's no problem, we'll just send a letter for it.
No, they're very reasonable based people.
Drive the letter, and if that doesn't work, then we'll take the next.
Yeah, no, they're very reasonable based people, and it literally, their property.
And it's a long way to the house.
And it's far from the house, and it's, you're, you're into the woodsy area, you wouldn't even realize it was on their property, and they're very nice people, so.
Okay, good.
Anything else, Suzanne?
Yep.
Old business, anybody have any old business you want to bring up?
No, sir.
New business? I have one item from new business. It's, everybody is aware of, Jake has resigned at the Senate meeting. Do I have a exit interview with Jake?
Who is Jake? Does he be requesting?
He's the police department.
We requested him.
He retired.
Yeah, he retired, but he didn't want it to be.
He didn't want any.
I recommend, I recommend it.
He retired, he's a, he's a public official, but still, he made public, he asked not to have a party.
Okay. You're on film right now, folks. Look, can we buy by people's requests?
Can we, can we just?
Put a non-public on it, first round?
It would, it'd probably be personal or reputation at this point because he's no longer employed because he retired.
Right.
So, I.
We're just noting it, right?
Yeah, we're just noting it. He has, he has retired.
All right.
Moving on.
Withdraw. Moving on, selectmen's report, selected air, selected person air.
No, the conservation, I haven't been to a meeting since the last time.
Article.
There hasn't been a rec. commission.
Select person hatch.
No, the people withdrew their application to the zoning board, and that's where it No, the people withdrew their application to the zoning board and that's where it stands, so there was no hearing.
Select person there?
Planning board continues to talk about solar zoning and they're looking to have a meeting on Wednesday?
I don't know, this wants you to confirm Tuesday, Wednesday. Yeah, I can't, I have conflict.
They're looking to have a meeting.
Chong.
Just trying to find it. I have too many emails here and it was a request, I think, for this Wednesday or, or no, Wednesday, the 12th.